Item up this evening is the election of city council officers, which we're required to do as our first item of action item when we have our first council meeting after the new year. So, council president?
I move to elect Mike Clark as president of the city council for 2010.
Moved and?
Do I second that? Yeah.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. If you have no further discussion, would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess that makes you the new council president. Do you want to move to elect the?
No.
You want to do that?
I move to elect Betty Taylor, vice president for the city council for 2010.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further discussion?
Sure.
Any other questions? All right. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations, Mike, councillor Clark, and councillor Taylor. All right. So now you're the guy in charge here of putting the motions out, right?
On the next one? Is that how it works?
But we're going to go to public forum next. A public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have eight people signed up for the public forum this evening. So the first one is Andrew Fisher, followed by Rick Henson.
My name is Andrew Fisher. I am a Eugene resident and I reside in Mr. Brown's ward. Members of the council, Mayor Piercy, fellow Eugenians, good evening. I've come before you tonight as a private citizen seeking your support in an effort to preserve a local historic resource, the former Joe Romania showroom. The showroom is built in a space-age style of modern architecture known as Googie, which came about in the years of renewed American optimism following World War II. In the Pacific Northwest, the best-known example of Googie architecture is Seattle's Space Needle, which is a landmark structure and a shining iconic symbol of that community's history and development. The publication Eugene Modernism describes our showroom as "the strongest example of Googie in Eugene." As you are aware, the showroom lies within the Walnut Station study area. The existence of the showroom may be seen by some as an obstacle to development, however, I believe the opposite, that the showroom is a community asset and a cultural artifact. Its preservation and meaningful reuse could serve as a catalyst, I believe, for the Walnut Station development. The vision I hope to share with you this evening is this, that amongst the new five-to-seven story construction vision to spring up along Franklin Boulevard, that we preserve the showroom in an open, park-like space that will encourage residents and visitors to relax and to gather. This open community space could offer a much appreciated contrast to the dense commercial and residential infill being planned. We might compare such an open space with Portland's Pioneer Courthouse Square or our own City of Eugene's Park Lots. In general, I believe the best use for the showroom would be one that encouraged visitors to our city and residents alike to experience the showroom space. This could be achieved through its repurposing as a high-profile retail establishment or as some sort of multi-use community center, and there are many other suggestions. In summary, I believe there are all the right reasons to preserve the showroom. One, it embodies an era of history that was characterized by a distinctive architectural style, one that portrayed a fantastic and optimistic view of the future. Two, it is the work of an accomplished local architect, Grant Cedar, and a well-known local builder, Gail Roberts. Their respective efforts in design and construction have certainly influenced the development and character of Eugene's urban landscape. Three, it contains elements of significant architectural design and innovation, specifically the modern movement's use of concrete, steel, and glass to blur the distinction between indoor and outdoor. Four, it tells the history of local business development in Eugene. Five, preservation would provide important historic context for the Walnut Station development. Six, this unique local resource, I believe, could support the creation and character of a signature entrance to Eugene. This reborn, repurposed showroom could serve as an iconic landmark structure for Eugene and the vibrant, beating heart of Walnut Station. Our community has a proud tradition of promoting historic preservation.
Thank you. Time's up?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rick Henson is next, followed by Lou Sininger.
Good evening. My name is Rick Henson and I'm an AFSCME council representative for Local 1724. We represent over 660 City of Eugene workers. I'm here tonight to ask for your assistance. As we saw in the registered guard recently, the city has decided to contract out 10 family-wage jobs, jobs historically held by men and women who live, work, and spend in our community, folks who took great pride in maintaining our wonderful public library, pride that showed and was recently recognized by the mayor, I believe. The city chose to turn those 10 jobs into minimum-wage contract workers. AFSCME believes this was a bad decision, a decision that will have a negative long-term impact on our community, the workers here, current businesses, and frankly, in recruiting businesses that we hope will pay family-wage jobs in the future. Community looks to the city for leadership and policies that will build good, family-supporting jobs for our citizens and not lower them. I would ask the council to reverse this decision and restore these 10 positions to the family-wage status. AFSCME will be providing more detailed information over the next few weeks and would be happy to participate or provide expert witnesses for any work session the council might decide to put together. I have one other additional thing. We have some concerns to bring your due attention. It is evident that a significant change is occurring in the relationship between the city, its workers, and their unions. The city tends to talk about partnership but makes decisions without input, and when it can't convince folks, it simply implements those decisions many times, we believe, in violation of our signed contracts. We, AFSCME, has volunteered to collaborate with the city and finding and implementing the best possible remedies. We'll continue to do that. These tough economic times will pass, and the decisions that we make now will determine how we work together in the future. There are some great people, we think, involved in senior positions within the city, but they need clear policy directives and support to guide their decisions. We'd volunteer to participate in any kind of planning session, maybe with some of you and senior administrative folks, to kind of get us back on track, because we think it's important for the future of the relationship to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lou Sininger, followed by Cindy Clark.
Mayor Piercy and councillors, good evening. My name's Lou Siniger. I now reside in Elmira, Oregon. I, as some of you may know, I used to be the AFSCME representative for the AFSCME membership here that worked for the city. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about the past. Please indulge me. Back in 2005 and 2006, the union, AFSCME, Oregon AFSCME, union representatives and city representatives got together. There were five union reps and six city reps. I don't know how we got outnumbered, but at any rate, we invested our time and we invested our money. We hired, the city and the local 1724 hired Kevin Boyle out of Corvallis to help us with the problem. The problem was, how can we find a logical, rational, mutually acceptable approach to the subject of contracting out city services? And after over a year of collaboration, we found resolution. And of course, our resolves could only be done by consensus, so that means everybody at the table bought into it. And we found, by developing a competitive service delivery assessment tool, which we called for short "The Assessment Tool" or "The Tool." We presented the tool to the city managers in 2007, and the city manager, Dennis Taylor, delivered a letter to all supervisors of AFSCME employees on March 16th, which I've included in your packet, which he quotes. One of the things he said about it, "I endorse the use of this tool by every manager whenever the question of how we can improve working conditions, increase production, or even maintain a level of service on a reduced budget rate." How apropos. So in two instances where we tested the tool, the shortcut process called "taking off ramp" was used because they turned to internal improvements and found, they just discovered themselves. So when I found out that the city did not use the tool when it made its decision to contract out the library services, I was somewhat flabbergasted. Why would the city spend that much time and energy and develop something that was endorsed by the city manager at the time and then ignore it? It seems like a big wave.
Thank you, Lou. Next is Cindy Clark, followed by Josh Scov.
My name is Cindy Clark. I reside in councillor Solomon's ward. Once again, I find myself before you disturbed by decisions from our city's executive management. Contract and labor violations aside, you as our elected officials need to decide if the decision to contract out the night custodial services at the Eugene Public Library is consistent with your goals and our community's values. The executive management has opted to contract out the custodial services of the library to a company that supposedly hires disabled workers, including veterans. But before we race ourselves, before we race to wrap ourselves in the warm fuzzies of hiring the disabled and American veterans to provide this service, I want to hear from you how eliminating 10 living-wage jobs and replacing them with minimum-wage jobs is consistent with council goals. Mind you, I believe that hiring workers with special needs and providing them the training, the coaching, and the supervision to allow them to be successful is a really great thing. In fact, the city currently does just that. But how do you justify paying a worker a lesser wage than someone else doing the same work just because they have a disability? Where does that fit within council goals and the diversity and equity strategic plan that our organization and this community has made a huge investment in? Speaking of investments, our community has made a huge financial investment in our public library. Is it really prudent to risk subjecting this beautiful building to the care and maintenance provided by employees who may not be trained and supervised? I work in the atrium building. Our building maintenance contract is with the same company hired by the city to take care of the library. You can write your name in the dirt on the wall of the bathroom. No joke. The bathroom floors meant to be white or gray. You can tell where the mop has been and mostly where it has not. Our bathrooms are not open to the public. The libraries are. Is this what we want for the families that patronize the library? What will it cost when the organization has to finance the cleaning and restoration after the damage is done? Regarding the budget, despite bringing our legal services in-house, as you brought up in the state of the city, the city still pays several thousand dollars to Hurrang Long for all of the legal work regarding labor relations, even though our human resources director is a trained attorney. The city continues to hire management positions, create and hire management positions. Claiming budget woes, the city has now replaced 10 living-wage jobs with minimum-wage jobs at the library, yet still managed to find the funding to create and fill a newly-created management position at the library, a customer experience manager. So I want to hear from you how eliminating living-wage jobs to create minimum-wage jobs are consistent with your goals, and I also want to know how allowing the maintenance of our beautiful public library to lapse, ultimately costing us more in the future, is in the community's best interest. And since I've got a second left. While I may be very critical of our executive management, I do appreciate the position that they're in, and I-
Thank you. Josh Scov is next, followed by Vic Saban.
Good evening. Joshua Scov, 2036 Willamette. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission and chair of the commission's Land Use and Transportation Subcommittee. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sustainability Commission to discuss the use of federal Surface Transportation Program Urban Funds, also known as STPU funds. At our December 16th meeting, we decided unanimously to provide council with guidance on this topic. My comments should of course be seen in the context of the recent staff memo on this topic from Mark Schonning. In a sentence, the Sustainability Commission asks that you prioritize bicycle and pedestrian investments for these discretionary funds. Now, since I understand through the grapevine that people do occasionally come and simply ask you to spend money one way or another, let me give a little bit of background for why I would say that. First, it bears noting that transportation funding is generally inflexible and generally devoted entirely to the car, often legislatively, often through federal dictates. That means that we have to give a special look at how discretionary funds are spent. Second, we have a particular policy, as the staff memo describes, I won't go into detail here, that reinforces this situation, this dates to 2005. The staff memo describes this policy in a nutshell to spend discretionary funds on pavement preservation exclusively. And third, we already have a substantial funding initiative devoted to pavement preservation, you know, funded by bond measure. I don't assert that this addresses all pavement preservation needs, of course, we know about the backlog, but we are addressing that need to some extent with the highest priority projects through that bond measure. Now, these circumstances and policy positions are, interestingly, at odds with our city council-approved goals to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and to counter long-term economic dependence on fossil fuels and higher energy transportation prices that virtually all experts say we're going to face. So we've come to the task of aligning, or realigning, I should say, city spending priorities. On behalf of the Sustainability Commission, I'd like to make three specific suggestions to guide your directions to staff on this issue. First, explicitly direct staff to favor bike and pedestrian investments in the list that the city submits for federal funding. Second, direct staff to level the playing field in a planning sense between car-focused investments and bike pedestrian investments. We currently have a bicycle and pedestrian strategic plan, but it's a strategic plan, it's not really a menu of options. We have to get that additional piece of planning done so this lack of a menu of options is no longer an obstacle to comparing these to car-oriented investments. And third, to the extent that we must pursue some additional car-oriented pavement preservation projects beyond the important list of bond-funded projects, please direct staff to seek the win-win investments that serve general car-oriented pavement preservation goals as a side effect of bike and pedestrian investments. There are some overlapping sweet spots, and we should look for those. And I will submit my comments into record in electronic form and take your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Vic Saban, followed by Mel Oberman.
I'm Vic Saban. I live at 1895 Columbia, and I'm in Commissioner Zelenka's ward. Last month, a city employee was erecting signs underneath our Zone A parking signs in our neighborhood on Moss Street and Columbia Street from 17th on up to 19th. Unbeknownst to us that this was going to happen, a city employee was putting them up for the university to allow university permit parking. I've owned my house since 1962 and recently returned 10 years ago, about 2000, to retire here, and then low and behold, it turns out university parking is essentially in front of my house and every other house along the streets there, as well as 17. Now, it's true the university owns many of the properties and has even removed many of the houses farther down the street, but there is supposed to be a bulwark of private homes bordering East 19th, and, you know, so I felt relatively secure until they were attaching these signs. I've submitted photographs of these signs, and I think you're going to find Waldo faster than you're going to find any logic in that, to tell you the truth. And I share the house with Mel Oberman, the next speaker, if he chooses to speak. And he has, I'm sure, barraged you all with letters for the last six weeks or so since the signs went up, and he hasn't had any satisfactory response from Jeff Petrie or whatever that is satisfying to either of us. And it has pointed out to me by other people in the neighborhood that it's particularly bad for people with children, families, and stuff. Number of the houses do not have driveways onto the streets of Moss and Columbia, nor easy or any access, some of them, from an alley and back. So I want to say, please, take the signs down, certainly in front of the privately-owned properties. The university, I think they should take them down too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next is Mel Oberman, followed by Dennis Gabrielson.
Mel Oberman here. I had the same problem. I'd like to point out also that Mr. Petrie explains the parking situation as being very successful in some places, but he doesn't tell you that it's actually successful around a parking lot where there is no people involved in it, and so that he doesn't get any complaints with it. And what he's moved the parking into, the parking lot is essentially the parking lot that's going to be taken out for dormitories and the surrounding surface is going to be taken out for dormitories, and those places are presumably going to be moved in front of my house. The other thing is that property there is totally owned by University of Oregon, whereas they're moving into an area that is about a dozen houses that are not. The one response I got from the University of Oregon is says they regret the inconvenience and that if there's a problem, I should take it to the city council. I hope you will reconsider.
Thank you very much. The last speaker today is Dennis Gabrielson.
My name's Dennis Gabrielson. I live in Crestville, Oregon, 300 South 10th. I have three topics to talk about tonight. First topic is the furloughs. I wanted to let you know that a judge in California found that the governor of California was illegally did mandatory furloughs for the employees of the state of California. And I think that in our contract, it's going to state the same thing. I don't think that the, topic number two, the Bean project, I don't see why the city's going to be putting or loaning Bean another $6.5 million when they've already loaned him $3.5 million when you say we're in an economic crisis. Simply stated, it's taxpayer money. Even though you guys think it's from the federal government, that's still me, that's still my taxpayer dollar. So you need to look at it physically that way, not, oh, it's just free money. If it's free money, give it to me. I'll leave real- I'm in disagreement with the Dream Act. I don't have a problem with anybody who's graduated from high school going to college, but I don't think they should be given special treatment for going to school here, as if they went to school here as an undocumented alien, that means that we put out about $120,000 to their education already, and I don't think we should be putting any more into it. One last little note. I worked at the wastewater treatment plant. We also have the same custodians, and if it isn't wrong, you can go in and you can, all they have to do at wastewater is do the floors, and I wouldn't, some people don't even like walking on the floors, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum. Thank you all, and ask for comments from the city council. Before I call on city councillors, I just want to, Andrew, who brought the Romania issue forward, I just want to thank him again. He sent me this fantastic Christmas card with the picture of the Romania facility. It was very cool. I want to express to my, our city employees, our union friends here, I think you know this, I have some pretty big concerns about contracting out as a policy, and I am concerned about the relationship. And I've asked our city attorney about where that line is for us between where we're forbidden by our charter to get involved and at what level we can participate in a policy decision, and he has told me he'll get back to me on that. So that's out there. And I'm very interested in the use of the tool that you spoke of for, and I just want to say, it's nice to see Lou again. I want to thank the Sustainability Commission for bringing that forward. It was interesting that he brought that tonight, just when I sent you guys a email this afternoon over the same issue that I think we need to have a discussion about whether we've locked our, there's no doubt that we have a big, huge hole in preservation, but the question is, do we want to say that you can't use any of STPU dollars for any of the other things? We have multiple things that we need to move forward sometime, so it's worth a discussion, and I hope we'll have it. Thank you for coming and talking to us about the parking issues. We've received emails, and I'm sure we'll do some further looking into that. And now I'm going to thank you all for coming and turn this over to councillor Pauling.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, how many actual people were laid off as a result of the contracting of the janitorial services? How many full-time city employees lost their jobs?
No city employees were laid off.
And is there any restriction or any amount of supervision or training that is required for the employees supplied by St. Vincent's to call?
I'll have to turn to- We'll have to get back with you on that.
Because if their work is substandard, then perhaps it's not what we're looking for, if their work is substandard. And then, what impacts, I'm trying to make sure I word this right. If these janitorial services were created by or were conducted by city employees, what impacts to other service areas or other employees would we be looking at? Would there be cuts in services at just the library or throughout the city, or would we lose personnel from some other department to make up for this?
I don't want to speculate, but the goal last year for this year was, within the financial situation we are, was to minimize impact on services and not lay off any employees. And I think we're able to do that, and so in that total context, we've been able to do that. Now, if we hadn't contracted out those particular positions and saved those dollars, what would be the other options? I don't know that particular, I don't want to speculate on the answer to that.
And I believe this issue was addressed one other time. I think it was brought up before about the, and I think it was referred to this evening as the customer experience manager, the new manager position at the library. This has been brought up before, and you've given the explanation on that. Could you tell us again about that additional manager's position that you created at the library?
I can do that, and then if I need somebody to weigh in with more detail, they sure can. Essentially what we did is we, you might remember last year with the organizational footprint, we actually eliminated about 40 positions out of the organization, not laying off any employees, just through attrition. One of those, one of those positions was as a result of combining two positions at the library into one position. This is the one position that's resulting from that combination of two. So it's not a new position, it's a net negative one position, actually. Does that make sense? We took two different positions- We took two different positions and reclassified them into one position.
And gave it a new title.
And gave it a new title. That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody coming to speak and Rick and Lou and Cindy, and appreciate you guys, Dennis and Lou, yeah, sorry, I appreciate you guys coming to help us understand this a little bit better. I've appreciated the emails, too, to kind of help understand all the stuff that's at play here. A couple of things were said there that I wanted to make sure, too, that I understood better and asked City Manager, too, if he wanted to respond to any of what was said there. One of the things that was said was that this is a significant new change in policy. Do you, is this either during your tenure or otherwise, would you consider this a change in policy?
This is the first time during my tenure that we've contracted out these types of positions. That's correct.
Okay. And the amount of money we're talking about here, I mean, I heard the discussion of the elimination of 10 family wage jobs. I think Councilor Pauling did a good job of, we didn't really eliminate any of those folks' work for the city. We changed so that would, according to the plan, be more economically feasible for the city. But I'm wondering what the real dollars are that we're talking about, if that's at all a public discussion?
We're estimating that it's a minimum of $250,000.
That we're saving?
Correct.
And that's over the course of a year, based on the change in the wage rate? What's the significance?
This year would be $100,000, what we're anticipating, and then, because it's not an entire year, for an entire year's savings for FY11, for example, and beyond, it would be $250,000.
Okay. And would you classify?
Annual cost. Or annual savings of $250,000.
Would you classify what we're paying the contract folks as a non-living wage?
I don't know that. What I do know is, what I understand is, their annual rate, or their hourly rate would be less. They're also receiving a benefit package. And I'd have to get back to you specifically on sort of the comparison of the total pack.
Okay, okay. The difference is representation, obviously, and a slight change in, or a slight difference in how much we're paying for that.
Yeah, and I, can I just follow up on a couple of things? One, I want to make sure, understand that I very much appreciate the work that all our employees do, and I very much appreciate the ASME representatives being here. I do think they represent their employees very well, and I think that's what they're supposed to do, and I appreciate that very much. And I also understand that we probably just have a different perspective and viewpoint, and we very much want to try to resolve this, as we've resolved sort of the budget issues with the other three unions. So we're very much wanting to continue to work through that, work on that relationship. We have opportunities on our side to do some things to improve that, and we will, and we need to do that. Part of the motivation for me in a lot of this was, one, to make sure that all of our employees, if they chose to, could stay employed with the city organization, for the reasons that we've talked about before. Because, one, we do provide a nice package, which is very appropriate. We want them to continue their health benefits, their retirement benefits, and be able to continue with the city organization, which is why we wanted to make sure they stayed with the city organization. This particular case, while they are being paid less, we also are providing jobs for other people in the community, which is part of also, I think, one of our goals as an organization from an economic development standpoint, is to provide jobs for people in the community. So it does do that also. With that said, I do understand there's some conflicting values in there, and so we'll just need to figure out how to work through all of those.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, with regard to Mel and Vic, who spoke with us about the parking, I see Mark, I know that Councilor Zelenka has been a lot more involved in the negotiations with the neighborhood and who gets to park where and all that with regard to what they're building over there, but I'm wondering if, I couldn't understand this a little bit better from one of the staff folks, do I get that right, that there are some homes without driveways? I didn't mean to pick on you, Mark, there, I'm sorry, I don't know if he's the right guy on this, but there are some homes along there that don't have a place to park, but now that this on-street parking is designated for the university, how does that work exactly? I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to, help me understand that.
I know we put a memo in your packet and I don't have it with me, but I think what I would propose we do is Jeff and I will sit down with these two gentlemen and see if we can explain the situation a little bit better and also find out if there's a win-win. It was my understanding that there was a time period that we were going to work with them, and then we could look at alternatives. And so what I would propose is that we do that and then I'll close the loop with you all as well.
That's wonderful, and I appreciate that. What I was asking was the larger 30,000-foot question, which is, are there places where folks who may not have a driveway to park in their own home that are now, that used to, let's say, park on the street as a regular course of business, and now that's university parking?
No, that's not my understanding, but I'll have to, I'll follow up as part of that, make sure I have that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to move item number five up to the top of the agenda since Councilor Ortiz has to leave. And that item is the interim appointment to the Budget Committee. And Council President, you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes. Sorry, I got to get used to that. It's my job now. I guess, as I saw in the straw polling that we did, we had a four-four tie, so I guess, I will, let me scroll down to the appropriate place on here. We've jumped ahead a little bit, sorry, I got to change this out into the right place. Move to appoint Aaron Walker as an interim appointment to the Budget Committee to position six, the unexpired term of Noah Camrat, which will expire on June 30, 2012, and I'll speak to that if I get a second.
Been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. And Councilor Zelenka?
I move to substitute.
Oh, wait a minute, I, Councilor Clark wants to speak for a moment, and then I'll call you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. I make that motion because when I review these particular candidates, both of them are excellent candidates. And the young lady that got four votes and Mr. Walker that got four votes, I found equally qualified and wonderful people that are willing to serve our city. Recently, we approved the Human Rights Commission's work plan. And as a part of that, there was very specific language about boards and commissions and about geographical diversity on city boards and commissions. It's a very specific part of the Human Rights Commission work plan that we all approved. When you look at the citizen members of the Budget Commission, their job is not only to bring the skills necessary to do the work, but also to bring a sense of community values to the work, to make sure that we're spending the city's money in harmony with the greatest number of people throughout the city's kind of values and principles. And the overriding issue for me here is that right now, there are seven current citizen members of the Budget Committee, and absolutely none of them are from North Eugene. None of them live north of the river, not one. They all live in South Eugene. Not one of them live in West Eugene. They all live in South Eugene. They all live in either Council Ward's eight, three, or two. Now, we shouldn't make these kind of selections based on just one particular characteristic like that, but both of these people, to me, seemed equally qualified. One of them would add another person from Ward three to the Budget Committee, and the young lady there, and the other would, Mr. Walker, add somebody from Ward four in North Eugene. And I thought it might be fair just to have one person from North Eugene whose voice could be heard on the city's Budget Committee.
Councilor Zelenka.
Move to substitute Shonda Miller.
Second.
For the Budget Committee appointment.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Okay, I guess we're going to vote on that. Would you please vote? It's four to four. I will vote for that substitution, so the substitution passes. And so now you'll be ready to vote on the substitute motion. Would you please vote? Five in favor and three in opposition, it passes. And then, is it one more voter, is that?
No, it's.
All right, all right, we're ready to move on. Thank you all very much, and congratulations. And now we're going to go to the consent calendar. Council President?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Clark?
Pull item G.
Pull item G, okay. Pull item G, and now I think we're ready to vote on the rest of the consent calendar. Would you please vote? Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. We'll go to item G. Councilor Clark?
Thank you. City Manager, do I have this right, that that is the particular piece that we postponed from last year? Because of the nature of the economy, we didn't want to increase SDCs at a time when it was difficult, so we postponed this, right?
Correct, but I can have Mark Shoney.
Yes, but I can have Mark Shoney expand on that if you'd like.
Hornings?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Burris, Public Works Engineering. And yes, you're correct, the SDC periodic adjustment was not adopted in April of 2009. Typically, we do an annual adjustment.
Usually, we give our colleagues the courtesy of notice if we're going to make a motion about something, and I didn't do that, but this occurs to me as something where the economy's not better yet. And I'm wondering about the idea of, what would be the consequences of us postponing this to a date certain, say, six months hence?
We basically just delay some additional revenue collection for permits that do come in during that time, and potential delay of some capital projects. That's always the consequence of not adopting a periodic adjustment based on inflationary adjustments.
And is there anybody that could be specific about the capital projects we may be delaying?
That would be Mark Shoney.
Thanks, Nancy.
Yeah, sorry, I keep trying to get you the microphone. No, I can't give you a list of specific capital projects. We've seen that the SDC revenue declined dramatically since the last time the six-year CFP was adopted, so a lot of projects are being, when you see the capital budget in a month or two and you do the next iteration of the six-year CFP, you'll see a lot of capital projects being bumped out. So this will just exacerbate that problem.
Well, I suppose, in the interest of trying to get people back to work, and for the same reason we did it before, I'll move to postpone this for six months.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I see no further discussion. Would you please vote on the motion?
George wants to.
Oh, George, okay. Go ahead, George.
By postponing this an additional six months, this will put us into the next fiscal year, is that correct?
Correct.
How long before the new, the new, new inflationary adjustments kick in? Would that be July 1, 2010, or?
Well, for the local inflationary adjustments, we typically do a periodic adjustment on April 1 of each year, early April. So that's what this proposal was for this evening, was to implement these adjustments in April. And it sounds like your interest in delaying doesn't tell July 1. Is that correct?
Okay, so the inflationary adjustments occur in April?
Yes.
On an annual basis?
Local inflationary adjustments, correct. MWMC, the regional, typically adjusts in July 1, in a typical year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Pryor?
Thank you. Wanted to be sympathetic to the whole issue of, is the economy well enough to sustain this? Probably the question I would have is, do we have a sense of the scale of dollars we're talking about by delaying this for six months? Are we talking millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of, I mean, if we delayed this for six months as a way of kind of letting the economy get a little bit back more on track, do we have any idea what kind of dollars we'd be talking about?
It's probably in the range of tens of thousands of dollars.
Tens of thousands of dollars, okay.
Just to clarify, what you did about six months ago is you, on the administrative fee, you adopted the resolution, but you had an effective date six months out. I'm not sure if that's what the intent is here, or just to delay the whole discussion.
My guess would be it's a delay of the implementation of the SDCs, so they are not in effect for another six months. That's what I would guess. I see a nod out of my peripheral vision. And so I guess what I'm trying to get at, what would be the material negative impact of delaying for, let's say, six months? I mean, I don't want to do it if it's going to create a material problem for the city. I mean, we've already waited six months. Is it going to create a significant material problem if we wait another six months? You say it's going to be a few, 10, 20, $30,000, something like that? And it possibly might delay some projects?
Clarify, we've already delayed it an entire year.
Right.
So this would be up to a year and a half. We can't recoup that first year that we've delayed.
Okay, I understand, okay.
And so the material effect, this is like deja vu.
All over again.
All over again.
There's not a material effect. You wouldn't notice a project being stopped all of a sudden.
Okay, I realize there's no such thing as a no-cost decision. There's always a cost. I'm trying to assess whether the cost outweighs the benefit or the benefit outweighs the cost. And so in this case, if six more months allows the economy to grow a little more and it's not going to create a, and these projects may still come through, it's just we would collect the money later rather than not at all?
Right. I'm sorry, say that again.
So if we delayed six months, that would delay the implementation of it, which might delay the SDCs rather than them going away altogether?
Yeah, it would delay the increase, but still be blocking SDCs.
SDCs, but not at the higher rate?
Right.
Okay. Tough one, but I think I'm willing to give it another six months if it's not going to create, and that's where it's important to know, if it's really going to create a serious problem, I would want to know. If it's not going to be a significant, and by that I mean a few, you know, 10 or 20 or $30,000 as a way to kind of keep the economy going, I'm willing to wait six more months. But that would probably be the last time I would be willing to delay.
Glenn?
Councilor Clark, I want to make sure I'm clear on what your intent was. Is your intent to have the council vote on this in six months, or for the council tonight to adopt the resolution with an effective date six months out? Okay, then I think what you meant to say?
Further.
Move to amend section six of the resolution to change the effective date from April 1, 2010, to July?
October, six months hence.
Okay. It has to be a fiscal year. No, you can have it whenever you want, but is it six months from today?
Six months farther.
Okay, so October 1, 2010, that's your amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, and the reason I did that is because really, we all know that the time you get into creating a project and getting underway is as we get into the spring and into the summer, and that's the timeframe we're trying to address here. We have an opportunity, I think, for the economy to pick up locally in that timeframe with regard to these kind of projects. But it's by no means certain, especially with national finance issues and credit issues being what they are. And while it's a few thousand dollars to the city, which will affect us, it could mean the difference of whether a project goes forward or doesn't in the private sector, and I'd just as soon see people have the chance to work, so, thank you.
Councilor Zelenka?
I don't really feel very comfortable voting on something where I don't really understand the full impact of it. I'm wondering, Mark, if we delayed this vote until Wednesday, could you come up with a fiscal impact, or would it take until Monday for you to be able to do that?
I think we could estimate the impact.
By Wednesday. So I move to table this to Wednesday, when staff can bring back a fiscal impact statement that would show, can you give us both what it would take if it were delayed six months from today and six months from April 1? So it was a motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Table and motions are not debatable, right?
Well, this is actually a motion to postpone to a date certain.
Okay, so it's not table, all right. All right. All right. Would you please vote on... Councilor Zelenka's motion? Four in favor and three in opposition. It passes. So then we... We'll come back to this on Wednesday. All right. So now I'm going to adjourn the meeting... Oops. Of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And Council President?
I move to adopt Resolution 1054 acknowledging receipt of the annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2009.
Second. Moved and seconded. And City Manager, do you have anything you wanted to say about the financial report?
Just real quickly, Mayor. Thank you. This is a resolution where you acknowledge receipt of the annual financial for the fiscal year ended June 30, as you did with the city's caffir and the consent calendar. This resolution demonstrates compliance with organ-revised statutes, which requires that a copy of the agency's financial report be furnished to each member of the governing body, and the auditor is issued a clean opinion with no issues, no doubt.
Thank you for that. We're ready to vote on that. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and in opposition. It passes. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Urban Renewal District, and we are finished with the business of the evening. Thank you all very much.